Using water access points in the village of Sac Harbor.
Yeah.
Yep.
So the more we prolong this phase of the project, not anything else, I think that's all.
Down the road.
I think it's stuff that's an individual case by case basis.
And we should be able to manage a plan that reconciles both the water access that's called for in the LWRP as well as water quality.
Right.
We should be able to do that.
Well, look, for example, Ground Bond, which has had some issues this past year, but it has.
It's brilliant what they did.
They removed the bulkhead and they put in.
Totally brilliant.
As well as a ramp.
Bio-swell and then they ended up putting in a drain.
So JR, what would be the next step here? These guys want to go to the trustees next week. They've they follow the basic procedure in the village of submitting or coming to us for our appraisal of these plans. What do we do? Do you need a formal vote or just a?
No, I think it was, I think their, I don't want to speak for them, but I think their purpose was just to inform you and keep you keep this board in the loop.
I appreciate that.
It was a.
Very much so.
Yeah.
And make sure that it doesn't.
And you've heard us and it's.
The LWRP, right?
Good job on identifying.
Yeah.
Well, the LWRP, but I think we also have concerns about 285, which Jala, you heard a laborious discussion about. So yes, and I agree with Will that we should be able to meet all the checkboxes for both the LWRP public access and the water quality issues in 285.
Oh.
But do we start by surveying it?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Put a post there? Absolutely. It's a very discreet.
Who are Dog Patch Bandits?
It's a nonprofit that I run. And one of the things that we look at is maintaining resources and recreational resources in the village. And water access points we see as something that is a great really resource for the public to be able to access the water. You go to these places like Palm Beach.
Nothing.
Very restricted, can't go, can't go to the water. Sac Harbor's a maritime community and our ability to access the water, I think is fundamental to the village.
Where would you get funding for the surveys?
So the surveying would be done by the village. Sac Harbor wants to do that in-house and I think that's the appropriate way to do it.
Got it.
So it's all.
Yeah.
How can you do it in-house? We don't have a surveyor.
In-house means they pay for it.
Huh?
In-house means the village pays for it.
Pays for it, right. So let me.
But we would raise the money and and put in the posts.
Bulkhead for it.
Yeah.
Right.
So there's no burden on the village.
Which is really.
So you mentioned like we've lost water access and the one that I'm really aware of is the other end of Cove Road. What other ones have been lost?
Uh, Notre Dame Road.
It's still there.
Nope, there is two on Notre Dame. One is still there, the other end is not.
Oh, interesting.
For the survey.
Okay, it's got two ends. I assume the narrow end is no longer there.
And by the way, in our past permitting process, for example, Green Street, as well as I think for the house on Dartmouth Street, both of those applicants not only recognize the fact that there was a public access adjacent to the property, but they agreed to help in the reconstruction of the shoreline at those points. And I think that's something that maybe you guys can follow up on going forward. But we're not quite there yet.
We're not there yet.
Good. All right, that's fine.
And I would just add that there are, you know, as I'm sure you know, there are other points, there are other road entries in the village and then for the water that you're not including here. And I I'm not sure why, but we need to look at those two as to as to whether they're key access points, as to whether there are environmental problems at those places, as to whether there's stormwater problems. I would just see sort of, would like to see some kind of combination. I mean, it isn't duty of the harbor committee to look at anything and make recommendations to the village board about anything that will that will affect water quality, could affect water quality or water water use in that clarity too. So I think it should be broader rather than narrow. What are your program? The the review of of these, as I said before, as I said before, if you look at if we got a lot of people accessing the water from this point, will it have an impact on the water quality? Very simple.
Well, that's maybe, that might be a nice problem to have, but I think the first step is to start with these that have been identified and go slow. Let's start this, survey this, let's memorialize this, stake in the ground, if you will, and then figure out whether or not it was successful, what happened, and where else we might want to go.
These two.
Great. Thank you guys. You might consider not letting me launch by 25 foot boat there. That you might consider that that would be environmentally damaging.
I don't know that you could launch a 25 foot boat.
Amherst, I think I could.
Well, let's let's move on. I think this is great.
Thank you.
And we look forward to the next one.
Uh.
Thank you.
Right. Anybody else in the public? This morning, anybody else from the public?
Any other questions from the public?
Any other questions from the public on that, on the road anything in particular?
Or any other topic?
Yeah, any other? Any other questions from the public? On anything, not related to any of the specific agenda items tonight.
Leaving politics out of it.
Okay. I'd like to see.
Here's one.
All right, so correspondence requiring action. 154 Redwood Road requests for a two-year extension of the harbor committee permit originally issued on 6/13/2016, last extended on 8/4/22. We have anybody from this application to speak on this? Billy?
I'll do that, yeah. Hey, everybody. Um, this is.
Are they the same owners or is this flipped around a bit?
Uh, I don't know. The 100% of the owners is working the authority to have support of the project.
Can we give them a one-year extension? I'm kind of like questioning the fact this has been out there for eight years.
It's a big, I mean, it's relatively a big project, but the project is consistent with the current code. I think if you're going to do one year, I guess that's enough.
Well, isn't there a proviso, the first extension is two years and then that subsequent are one year? Up to and then and then it's finito, right?
We granted multiple extension plans on that. Billy, if you put it in the board, just to clarify our condition on what it is, the application is. Because there are some additions in the last meeting, just to use under comment that you're actually passing through.
So I don't have full copy of this submitted application. Like, I don't know what it is and I don't know that it is just a reference that would be submitted as part of this application to extend, which is renewing the thing that it has essentially. Everything is how.
Is 154 Redwood recognized and registered?
Yes.
Yeah.
The nearest structure that's mentioned to you is a 75-foot structure. There's nothing else as far as than that. And it does incorporate a 50-foot wide native vegetation buffer and drainage of the drainage.
Isn't there a big deck on the back of this house on the water side of this house? It's got a tree growing through it?
I think this has been.
No, the house.
No.
That's true.
This survey that shows the block is currently being. The original permit in 2016 recognized that house on the property. There was representation of some kind of possible new water work. The last meeting was a study of anywhere. There's a knowledge of the high system.
I don't know.
Free extension, but there's nothing solidified in the permit.
We just.
Yeah, I think with the form of his evidence, there was a long history of.
May I do that? And I'm not.
Just a long way. They're very few of them, you know, applications, so perhaps you should just come back to the application.
Bill, can we come back next month on this?
Back with a full better pitch on the project.
Right.
Appreciate it.
The history.
Right.
And.
And look at the permit that you want us to. I was confused. This isn't next to Amherst Road and this is the one that's got a big fence in front of it. It's 54 and 154.
We're going to bring it back for a hearing at our next regular hearing.
Thank you, Billy.
For more information.
Yes. Okay, continued public hearings. We have 25 Terry Drive.
I'm sorry, did you make a motion to table the?
I make a motion to table 154 Redwood Permit Extension Renewal to the next meeting.
Do your second.
Second.
All approve of.
Thank you.
Anamis, thank you. Okay, so moving on to the continued public hearing portion of our hearing tonight and 25 Terry Drive. I gather you are representative of 25 Terry Drive?
Good afternoon, yeah. I'm representing Mr. Johnny Graves. Uh, this is down Candy here today. I got this attorney for the project. So I don't be representing and presenting edits to the last presentation. And I'll just, I have some.
So this is the little modern house or this is the white?
This is the one that's.
Thank you. I don't think they budge stuffs the original foot.
I think.
This is quite a system.
Well, you know. I figured I'd bring my easel.
Yeah.
I'm using a little faster to use that up. All right. And the last time I realized that we didn't have it set up on an easel and I had rules and you guys had drawing that it was just confusing and I'll read it.
And the drawings were very hard to understand.
So now I'm trying to alleviate the issue tonight. But I ask you, you can just sort of stand and that makes it seem like I have a figure. Yeah. Perfect, that's right. Is that good? Like a standard?
Yes.
And then I can just. Um, so as you recall, this is a visiting house. We're adding an addition onto the house on multiple hours of the house. One-story additions. I'll walk you through those again. In doing so, we're replining the house and we're doing interior renovations and kind of renovating the house, but there's also three additions. And I think it might be easiest for me to just go through the board's comments from the last meeting, but we can get into the easel.
Yeah, if you could just take one moment and describe what we're looking at. The darker areas, the existing house, and the lighter brown area are the additions. Is that true?
Let me show you a survey. So this. This plan is the illustrated planting plan by. And so the gray area is the proposed house and the existing house combined. So he's showing what we're proposing in terms of following of the new house and the new decks that are replacing existing ones in kind and then the new plantings. So you can go further on this diagram or I can have the user just kind of talk through the site plan first or survey.
Can we see that just to pass it to him for a second?
This is the revised one where I think the main comment here was there was Cassandra that was called out as existing in this area and it was.
Oh yeah, we were at this. So you, the deck is it, the new deck is it?
That's the new deck.
And it's it.
No, there's not, no, it's not installed.
I mean.
I'm sorry, the new.
Is that thing already constructed?
No, there's an existing deck. We're replacing that deck with a new deck following the profile of.
What's the material that you're putting in the new one? It looks like.
It's O B wood.
So this is, this is existing then? Because it's a little confusing. Proposed over existing or?
It is, the existing will be removed and we'll be installing a new deck.
Last time when you were here, we asked you for a drawing that superimposed the proposed or the existing.
Yes, that's the site plan.
Okay. And mea culpa, I didn't pick up my packet, so I'm now looking at something in front of me. Is Doris there?
Here.
Doris? Do you have my packet? Can I go get my packet? I'm so sorry. Mea culpa. But.
We were there yesterday and it looked like, was it, these decks were like synthetic.
Uh, I think it's a mix of some concrete and pavers, terrace and there's also synthetic decking and there's some wood decking.
Okay.
It's a mixture.
How much further will the new deck come out over the proposed deck?
It will not extend beyond. New will place a kind in terms of performance.
Because that's, that's kind of the analysis we kind of like to do, right? We, we say, what are the existing setbacks? What are the proposed setbacks?
I think that's what he said is in the site plan.
I'm going to get to it.
Okay, so.
So we, this is next time we jump into this luster of climate because it has color, I think.
Yeah, sure.
But I'd like to discuss all the items we talked about last time. It does retain to a deck or terrace that we are proposing. The board requested that not propose it. So we have removed it from the site board. If you recall, certain, this area here, we had a lower deck.
Yeah.
That was beyond the edge of the existing decks and or was not.
Unimpressed, right.
So we, Mr. Graves is obviously wanting to do it, but he's accommodating your, your interest and we are taking it out.
That's all grass there now.
Currently, it's just regular grass.
Yeah.
Like brass or piece of brass. So that's why in doing this work, we're bringing in all indigenous materials for, for the zone out as part, you know, of the setback. What's the back? So that was yet another comment to make sure the survey calls where what that setback is and the area which we're required to provide new planting sets and additions. So that has been added to the survey and it's in, that's also included in this revised plan. So that's point number. So. Then jump back just a moment and we'll go to a higher level and I'll just walk you through the survey. This is the two-scale certified survey, but it is hard to read. There's a lot of data. So I blew it up twice, scale, just for the sake of this, you know, interpretation. Um, and. But you all have this certified one in your packet, but again, it's a lot going on, so.
I see that place.
Yeah.
Getting mea culpa with my packet.
That's a rad. We also included the existing survey. This is the existing condition survey. So again, there's still a lot happening around this around it. However.
Thank you.
So one that I have is a setback here. We're showing on the survey where the proposed individuals and materials will go and if somebody required, so we're beating that criteria. And I mentioned before, there was proposed lower terrace here. It was removed from the scope. Not. Um, the, there's a question about the dry wells in the drainage system. Um, we have dry well design located. Uh, it's a drawn, a little drawing, but I went ahead and put on the architectural site plan. This is also in the packet, so we included all the revised drawings. Uh, so the drainage plan is here, the dry wells are located on our actual drawing, it's also located on the survey. This is the first time. Um, and then. Um, so alleviates some confusion about what is new, what's old, where's the edge of the existing house versus what that's basically. Uh, providing a diagram or synopsis of what all the new survey is. Um, we included a, a table here that's following out the existing setbacks from property line and the proposed setbacks. Um, which also demonstrated here with existing and proposed subdivision lines. For example, on this side, this is east side of the following reach. There's an existing shed. We're building out that shed. The existing is 28 feet from the property line and proposed is 21 feet. Uh, so there's some confusion about all that. What are you building, are you listed additions? Uh, we were going to have some else confusion, but so we added it to the draw for.
Okay. So, so now can you go over just briefly setbacks on the water side of the house in terms of what's existing and what you're proposing?
Sure. So for the house, there's no change to what is setback from the water, right? Uh, except for this corner, it's a north west corner of the property. Uh, we're building out the. It is built out a nine foot nine feet from the existing wall. Uh, so or existing base of the house. So there's a nine foot nine or up to ten foot extension of the house at this edge.
Or the street side.
Towards the water side. Then the water up here.
Right.
Yeah.
The water, this is the front yard, water side. This is where we're sitting.
Right.
So we're building out.
I see.
This way, this hatch. Because that's what we're facing the water and that's where we're going to occur.
So you're dotting on here that says principal setback. Dot, 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 dot. What do you say, it doesn't, I don't see it ending. Where's the setback on this new addition?
I'm sorry, the setback on the new, this, this is the side yard setback, yeah.
Okay, that's that setback. Where is the setback from the, the main high water line?
Oh, well, the buildable setback is this line here. We're, we're not close to the the property, the setback of the water line. But you could.
No. This existing property is 22.8, but it'd be interesting to know you're putting another structure here. How close that is? Does that conform to usual setbacks?
It does, yes.
It does? What, can you mention that?
Well, um, okay, I mean, I have a.
I mean, there's things here that are grandfathered because their structures are already there, but you're putting in a new addition, so I think we should see what the setbacks are.
We went through the zoning board for variance for this addition, so I.
You're, this is a new.
I never realized that, but I have that documented, of course, for that variance.
Good. So you got all your variances from the ZBA?
Correct.
Good.
And we have an interview.
But you haven't answered my question before we move on to others, which is there's a new addition here and I'm wondering what the setback is on that because the original house, I see, is like 22, 23 feet, is that right?
Well, to the deck, yes.
To the deck.
Another 12 feet to the house.
To the house. But this is all existing, right? But here we have a new addition.
That's right.
So I'd like to know what that setback is because that's kind of a new game. It's not the same thing as like the existing structures here.
This is a one-story addition, so it's encroaching into.
It's about 60 feet, looks like.
The surveyor.
If you, Marianne.
Yeah, I get it, but that's an approximate, that should be. We should know what that is.
23 plus 25. Or actually.
Plus 25 plus eight.
Another eight. Yeah, eight feet. We can get out of the surveyor at that or.
So substantially farther back.
Well, it should and I.
Marianne, it's. You have to listen a little bit.
I am listening, Herb.
The point is this. One of the points is this, the new structure is substantially farther back from the wetlands than what the existing house is.
Right.
And it's good to know what that number is.
Right. But wouldn't you think that the new structure should conform to our code?
Well, you're going to make every effort as an existing house.
Right.
See, I added in this setback table on the structural drawing. I'm calling it from the bulkhead.
Yeah.
The, the, the.
Right.
So the difference between existing house and existing house west is 68.8 feet from the bulkhead. For proposed west one-story addition, it's 57.9 feet from the bulkhead. So it's in the document, but that's not to the bulkhead.
So, so closer to the waterline than the existing house. That's what I'm.
Hold on a moment. Because it's. This follows this profile, so it has a zigzag to it.
And this is the proposed.
The proposed additions in this hatch. So it's aligning with the existing stair that's right here in this one.
And this is structure here.
This is, this is existing edge of the house.
Right.
And yes, we're, this is not changing. The house comes out to that edge.
And this is the new structure here, which sits behind. This.
This, this part right here.
Correct.
Not by much, but.
I don't, from my point of view, I don't really see that the fact that we have a grandfathered structure here sort of gives carte blanche permission to build everything up to that point.
I totally agree.
Or within whatever our setbacks are mandated, which is 75 feet.
He's not 75 feet.
No, he's not.
30, 55, 63.
Two.
From, from, from the bulkhead to this string right here, if you add up your strings, you got about 63 feet. Correct my arithmetic. 29.3. 25 plus eight. It's. So you're not at 75.
Yeah.
And is this existing here, your, your proposed deck? But is there a, is there an existing deck?
There is a deck.
So this is existing.
It's existing or that's new?
It's existing and we're replacing.
Uh, my, my apologies to the audience. I really think this should be done electronically so that everybody can share in these learning experiences because drawings tell a story. And well, this, this drawing is actually very accurate. Are, are you looking at it up there on a screen?
No.
Okay, so it's, it's, this. No. I, I just, I want to recommend you just for that reason because these guys are clueless and yet they're all students of our community that should be, I know several of them live right close to this. So we're not including them in the conversation and it's educational, I think, if nothing else.
Maybe a benefit of COVID, but I'm a little old school and I like presenting in person. I could have just thought about.
No, 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 that's not the point at all.
Person, they're just meaning present with a display that, that other people can see.
I have my computer, but at the time, I don't.
Well, maybe try one more time.
Yeah. It's, it's fair. Okay, the information's here, but you're excluding a lot of the folks here and there are some boards, if you don't have it electronically, they won't let you permit your presentation.
Okay.
Sorry, I just wanted to. Well, the other thing is it's difficult to share in measurement just by looking at these things. So there is some information that we need you to do just to get your strings right because it's not in our purview to add up your strings to make an assumption.
Well, okay, I will absolutely add that information. Um, I didn't, it wasn't requested apart, I didn't know you were looking for it specifically. I apologize.
That's just part of the sort of entry level, you need to string all the structures because one of the things that our rules are surround is like setbacks. So that's why we need to see what the dimensions are and.
And the table, I was, I was trying to make a table, so I. But I, okay, we got every other dimension on there. That one was missed. So we have all the side yard ones, new versus old, that, that north side was. Can follow you through that.
I'm sorry, we're giving you such a hard time. You're a nice person, but we just, you know.
Are you keeping the existing septic?
No, I have a point, yeah. I'm not there yet. I'm still going through the comments from that.
In terms of the presentations.
Oh, you're, you're going to put that on.
I'm still presenting.
He's presenting, all right.
And I apologize to the room and everyone who's welcome to come.
By the way, is there anybody else in the audience that's here particularly on this application?
Usually they're volunteering it. I buy people.
We're going to give you a few minutes just to continue the application uninterrupted as I.
Go ahead.
Good.
I'll take it. Um, okay, so the table strings setback was the question. Before, we don't have that string, I'll add it. The, I talked about I needed restoration to show. Um, the, uh, I talked about I needed restoration, uh, to share setbacks to match, and so we're adding there, we'll add that dimension as well. Um, the drywall, uh, I talked about, um, last, uh, was the, uh, new subject system. So technically, the work that we're proposing doesn't trigger requirement for a new subject system. Uh, we're not changing the number of bathrooms or bedrooms. We're not changing, uh, or making the building larger by twenty five percent. However, if, or attention, we would be preferred if we changed something, I agree. Like for, for, you know, the I system we use throughout, for the, the, the yachts, not more. Um, but we are responding to that and we are having an analysis, so we had that behind us, actually why I did that. A little bit late, that's our gift.
Okay, let me get a clarification. When you're doing a renovation, is there a percentage of renovation that would begin and uh upgraded?
Twenty five percent or so.
What about interior structural?
I'm not changing adding bedrooms, the health department counts bedrooms. They don't even count the matters, but they're now starting to count any kind of space that couldn't be used as a bedroom. So if you have a room in the basement, they can count it. So that's fine, and I'm completely beginning to explore it. So I deal with the water, because usually we have some serious change in water in our area. Um, as I'm saying, so, and Mr. Agent's totally ample. So it just took time to get the plans, uh, designed and processed, because it's a tight site, you know, there's not a lot of room. It can't, you know, on the water side, we're gonna have the driveway tied and, and, and we've got the drywells and all those setbacks. So this is also part of the package, but we're introducing the I system. Uh, and it's, uh, on, so this, this area of the driveway. Design, they can't completely leave the cars and whatnot. So, um, upon, you know, approval for this work, we'll put it through the department, the department effort. So that was the, that's my last piece, I wanted to clarify that. That we're introducing that.
So, um, one of the things we'd ask for is to have the new structure superimposed on the present structure. So I'm not sure of the ones that I have here, and I think I've looked at them. Which one is it? Because this, in all of these diagrams, talks about this as proposed deck, proposed deck on these three. Is there another diagram that you believe the policy is existing deck?
Well, um, existing, uh, uh, I think it's the strong.
This one, here's a fourth one?
Uh, no.
No.
Do you have, do you have an existing survey, Michael Hammer?
So, yeah.
They all say proposed, proposed.
This is, this is, this is existing, this, it's in the package, um, or it should be. Uh, so this is existing.
With deck?
This is existing house, so.
So it really helps us if we have them superimposed, because then we can easily see whether or not the new proposed deck conforms to those same dimensions and setbacks.
Pretty much it's there, though. It, it is, again, this, um, the profile of these decks is the same. If not, this is actually pulled back a little bit. And you can see there's a little dashed line here, the little gray line is showing existing, it's just very, it's faint, there's a gray line.
Perfect.
It's there, and then the hat shows addition versus what is not hatch is existing. So it is essentially superimposed on the survey.
How would I know that?
Well, I don't.
That's all right, that little, that little faint beige line, okay, thank you.
So how are you with adjourning this and sort of next meeting? Got a little bit of information from the most in terms of really just clarifying what you are proposing to your relative to the existing structure. That be fair enough to ask you to do at this point?
Sure, just to clarify though, I just want to make sure that I have all points to refer to do in update, though.
Superposition of the new structure.
Well, that's what this is, but maybe we just need it bigger.
Before we, before we do that, can we ask our, 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 our consultant, if he's got any time?
My last, I agree, and I agree, so, but this is, I've looked at it a lot, and I realize the board has this more manner of moments and you don't really kind of dig into it. Uh, there's a lot happening in there for a while, so.
Well, one thing you have to do in your proposed is put your IA system, uh, on your.
Oh, in the survey?
Yes.
It's on the survey.
Where?
Where?
I see the existing one, here's the existing one.
Oh, that's existing to be removed.
Yeah. Uh, is he a John?
No, I don't see.
Oh, no, he didn't.
I saw it, now I gotta find it again, but it's on here.
But there was a period that existing septic under the north side.
Yeah, existing, but I don't see the one.
Over here someplace, yeah, so I. On, on one of the, on one of those drawings, I spotted it.
Is that something we can just talk about, Branson?
What?
Has Brandt, um, his report?
I don't know, let's ask him.
Okay, so I can ask my expert.
No.
I think, and I don't want to just keep running up the bills, but it'd be really helpful to have this on this SUS. Because this is like you pointed out to me, like the existing and the proposed, yeah, I can see that little faint beige line, dotted line, when you pointed out. But I couldn't until you pointed it out, so if we're on a bigger format.
This is a double sided thing, you know?
I know, but I don't have it in front of me or at my home when I look at it.
For submission for this.
That would, I think that would help me.
No problem, I like this, will not technically be scaled or certified.
That's all right, it does need to be certified, if you have your, your license, I can give you a stamp, uh, your drawing. Yeah, 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 you don't have to have, uh, the ex, the, uh, surveyor do that.
Okay.
To show.
It's very involved, to do it or else.
Yeah. Where's that big magnifying glass I gave you?
Well, bring it up.
But I didn't know to look for it.
Is there any chance you can do this, uh, publicly at the next presentation?
Uh, I mean, yeah, I imagine we're all on computer to.
We'll work with you in getting it on the computer.
Um, that's just.
Enough said.
Uh, just. And I, I like to be here, and I want to just.
What percentage, what percentage offer is there in the existing versus the proposed?
Well, it shows down here, we have thirty eight, twenty three.
Oh, there it is, okay.
So, but this is like a hundred feet wide, so if we had a fifty foot buffer, that would say we need five thousand square feet, and we have thirty eight hundred. Is that right?
I have to look at it, but, uh, off the top of my head, I, I, I don't want to say. I would like Brandt, though, to comment from a professional standpoint, uh, what his comments are on the application at this point.
I have three hours.
Okay.
One of your addresses, uh, the proposed I system needs to fall onto the sort of basic plan. Uh, secondly, we're still not understanding the clarification on the comparison of the proposed weather buffer to the required, or the fifty foot standard. So they need to provide errors, so we have to look at the fifty foot setback.
Buffer.
Buff, weather buffer would be what that area calculation is relative to the area calculation is showing on the plan for the proposed buffer to establish the equivalent.
Right.
Though the code demands that. So. Would you mind signing a cover? I. That's actually my last point, that's actually my last. So I highly recommend you study the document two eighty five dash nine, standard for junior firms. And you can respond to the point at the top or make a decision on this app, so that area calculation, so that was accurate.
Yeah.
So you've got it down here, we need to see that, what the width of.
Hold on, I'm not quite.
Oh, you said you should last comment, I'm sorry.
No, that, that comment is unfinished.
Okay.
So as part of that, what, what I recommend you look at is to, a point that was made by, at least one of the board. You are standing at the house within the seventy five foot setback standard. You should recognize that code requires a crackable alternative analysis to present. So why, why is it necessary to put those additions where they happen? And as part of those additions, is there a necessity for some kind of mitigation of all set? What, what is it that can be offered to help for approved improvements within the seventy five foot setback?
Your I system.
I was gonna say that. But I'm saying that it shouldn't, it shouldn't be as simple as just the I system. If that is oiling the buffer, that's fine, but the board just needs to know that, if that's my, my address of standard by, um, apply, I'm sorry. If it will, if it will be I system.
You know, you, you, you should submit, you should submit that on the directory, some of the passes, preferably in a written form, so they have the opportunity to see it. And then, you know, presented at the, at the public meetings of the chair, and you'll want to consider all of them, right? So they address this. And I think, and I think there's an amount of lawn that's being turned into a, to a buffer naturally vegetated and, and we should quantify that as to how much that is. So basically, you want to present this as an improvement over the existing. You, you know, you can't really, with the existing house, so those doors fall out, you can't meet all, all of the standards necessarily, but. You know, to show how much of them you, you have made, you know, how, how, how you improve the property environmentally. Um, and I do have a question for you, which relates to earlier, it was a bluff, and they put a bulkhead around it, is it still a bluff?
Well, I think that's not deranged at this question.
That's why.
I can show you pictures of this house with no bulkhead and there was a bluff.
So just, I, I, I'm, I'm obviously excited that yes, that it would still be a bluff, if it, if it improvements. The difficulty is, when the improvements are required to the option, I just have to clarify, regulations makes. But to your point, I think about it, you, your regulations already allow you to add additions over the project with certain setbacks standards from the bottom down, which is a bluff. Sorry. Oh, okay.
Well, no, I think that, I think they, well, in, in this case, it looks like they're identifying wetlands as the base of the bulkhead.
Yes.
So, so that, but, but in another case, they might not be, and they might be, be arguing it would be from the, from the, from the, from the beach.
Are you saying, are you saying that the bulkhead actually is not a top bluff, it was a toe bluff as shown on the survey? The survey, the survey does say a foot of bluff from, from the map. So.
It sure does.
Is, is actually reference here in this map, and the survey that refers to the old file, assuming files that is in that. That just showed a foot of bluff.
Yes.
Yeah, so you're saying that the crest of the bluff is actually further than where.
It's a whole new game.
Yeah.
I would, I wouldn't argue about where the crest of the bluff is, I'm just simply saying, i- if the survey showed a bluff. We can show that there was a bluff, they put a bulkhead, should the measurements be based upon where the bluff is, or should it be to the wetlands? That's what I'm asking.
This is the one I'm saying.
That's correct, but it, because, only because they have put a marked wetlands at the foot of the, of the bulkhead.
All right, but let's leave it at that for now.
All right. Uh, I can't answer that question right now.
Okay.
It's a much better.
All right. What, what's your, you know, you never introduce yourself.
My, my.
Tell me again.
D A T.
Sorry, Daniel.
And I, I should, I'll let you know, um, the, the bulkhead that is existing here is old. Um, and the owner is looking to replace or repair.
All right, we'll deal with that.
I'm staying to the application, but I, it's one to be happy.
Right.
We're presenting this as a separate deal.
We're never gonna get rid of us, are you?
All right, good.
I asked that question because we discussed it earlier. Well, congratulations.
Do we open on this to adjourn to the next?
It does make the difference in your application.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn to the next?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
I just have one question, though, are you?
With this application, let's move to the next.
I know, but just, just hear me out for a moment, are you actually thinking you're gonna go forward with this plant and then replace the bulkhead?
No, I mean, it's, it's.
Council, this project is in construction right now, and there's a demolition permit and a building permit. What, is, is there a concern, uh, in terms of them pers, you know, continuing to do construction? If they do the bump outs on the northwest, um.
I have a feeling we're gonna.
Yeah.
We've got.
So, so you can actually go ahead and.
No, no, I think there are building requests, interior renovation. I did not go for permit, I have to blow the art. We had a large leak last winter, we did interior repairs, so, um, so, yes, there was a, so I was going to go ahead and install interior.
Okay.
Also had to replace.
That's fine, I want you to make progress better.
We're not, we're not doing any of this.
Okay, thank you.
That's great, thanks.
Well, I, I guess we have to move in order here, right? Because I have a feeling, uh, the next application is gonna be.
Which, the next application is.
Living wall, living roof.
But that, so that's not a public hearing, a public hearing is only for.
Right, right. Are we just doing the permit?
So.
It should be.
Now?
It could be that night.
So, sorry?
Are you asking if you can?
Well, what, what, what would you recommend we do for the application?
Well, the public hearing, I think we have a secret determination.
Correct.
Yeah, your steps are doing. The doctor's determination, doctor's, city determinations, and then you have, right, that's the new draft of the, uh, permit.
You have that permit here?
You have all three of those things.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we use a very technical document that, uh, I'll find the C bro and those consistency determinations.
Somebody reviewed these?
Yeah, here it is, so, um, the memorandum of receipt to the cloud description. Uh, review policies under, you know, twenty one, twenty five, that's ninety three, the road code, which is considered a type one action. Uh, I believe last meeting board, they adopted the C, um, sort of process. And, um, this type one action, such as direct bills, we can walk this way, and walk this way. Um, and as other, other, other land, we created the, the marsh, many, many cells of the control line. And then for swing to, uh, to set the five, the five, the bill to type one action to the subject, who both consistency review. Therefore, despite the subject review under C bro and the diligence of consistency review files. Uh, yeah, continued by bar one, full of our articles, this form, it's going to be reviewed. And maybe the subsequent will be prepared bar two and three. Uh, we determined proposed control lines, designs may be potential long term impacts. Potential impacts that anchor the project, such as impact surface waters, flooding the land, wildlife, plants, noise, uh, would only be short term, temporary nature. Um, that's made your practices will be implemented. We can afford at least mitigated environments and impacts are not anticipated to occur in this whole project. And then you therefore recommend significant exploration of C. Regarding those consistency, uh, yeah, the different products will test the form. Uh, and then we reviewed it and provided a, all the R P consistency review checklist. And those, those of consistency agenda, which are the C bro, the determination and documents, well, those consistency documents are attached to the memorandum. You should all have a copy of that. And that will be in the file, um, as well. And the N G A has determined that proposed by generally system, and then there was just all the R P files, the general system, also, the system. Sorry, the general system, also, the system. Um, but our conclusion that long terms, if we have attacks, we are not interested. Yeah, and it's clearly demonstrated that no crack will ever exist, so we're reducing erosion at the project stage. And that potentially impacts weapons will be temporary, temporary, which will return. The projects provide a net biological benefit through the restoration of the root of weapons. They continue maintenance and that, and then for the little shoreline, will increase the biological benefits associated with this whole project. Um, the determination, uh, states that the apartment is due to those projects, determining if the product will not solve certain impacts. As the public, it's generally consistent with the applicable standards of law of the R P, so, seventy five, that's five. As the survey probably is generally consistent with the applicable standards of the W R P, so in two seventy five, that's why I keep. But the little code. So at this time, we have five in order, um, I recommend you without resolution to. Uh. Without, without, without resolution, acknowledging the negative declaration under C R. And it will also consistency, um, determination by, by, by.
So those are three separate votes?
Yeah. No.
We're having a, we're having a.
Right.
If you have a question, we can talk about it, but I think everybody's.
Everything should be in order, but Marianne and Will have been most associated with this, you know, very complex application. If you guys have just a few comments on this, please, uh, do so now.
Well, I'm really happy to see it coming to this point.
Yeah.
And I think it's like a major, major step, you know? And Mr. Skegel, I thank you for persevering and doing this, and Mr. Hamilton and Jane, et cetera, you've been a great team. Um, you know, this sort of percolated up in the last discussion. I know you're bringing in quite a bit of fill, is there any thought as to like, what kind of fill is being brought in? Because that never went through my mind before when we discussed this.
So.
Is that not appropriate?
The public hearing is closed.
Oh. Can I ask you that question? Yes.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
We did that, and, you know, it is a requirement that clean sand be brought to the site.
Clean sand, yeah.
Is identified, um, so the, yeah, the objective here is to, well, rely on the permit language.
Okay.
And the conditions that will be read, and the approved plan. And the knowledge that there will be, you know, conditions associated with those that, um. We require the government to handle monitoring and, uh, very thorough conditions to the board annually. With the data that they get in place that recognize sustainability and the effectiveness of the.
Will, do you have anything?
Sure, I, I'm really pleased with, uh, the application.
Yeah.
All right. So, do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Well. We're approving your.
So you are approving the negative declaration, approving application, and finding that it is consistent with the.
L W R P.
Yeah, L W R P.
Okay.
Yes.
Second, so I hear a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good, congratulations, guys.
Yeah. So we look forward to seeing you coming back and reporting.
Yeah.
Hold on, yeah.
I'll wait for.
This, this one, this one actually. That was just to close your review standards.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
For L W R P, it's, this is the actual permit.
Okay.
Knowledge, approval. You just, you just, you just, and the consistency review. And now you're going to hear the permit. And decide whether or not the conditions are sufficient. And.
Right.
So you're gonna read the permit then?
I'm not gonna read the whole permit.
You're gonna read most.
The highlights.
You're very clearly required, as it is, about marsills, uh, creation, recreation of, of, of marsh areas. All of the, um. Area calculations and dimensions are outlined in her language on the pool, and. Um, this project, you know, will require planting, selected materials. Uh, rejection of lawn areas, um, and in the removal of three roots, that's what we came in at the last minute, there are trees there that, uh, had fallen. And the removal of those pumps necessary for, uh, actually completed its stable, as of the short line. So if that's fallen, it's a line, I'm not doing here. It makes sense if you do now, because I have to serve the area. So, um, again, you're familiar with backgrounds, so to discuss, uh, the findings are set to that, the app, the proceedings are completely completed on March twenty first, twenty five, four. It was discussed, um. There are the July eight, twenty twenty four, harbor meeting. Um. The additional materials were submitted June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Um. After that, twenty twenty four, we need to have our committee advise that your components, your components for the buyer remains as a habit, and then it requires some conditions of service. Yeah, I think it's aware of that. Uh, the app is also one that the laws are being reported, to report, the laws are being reported, it's required to submit to the village annually. As well as having nature storms, that's something that this board was concerned about. So that is, I'm explaining in her language, um, to have a minute requiring any sort of line, being such a traditional plans. On, um. Again, on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, the app has submitted an application, and then it's the harbor committee, for the review to include, remove all those three root pumps. So that's now here. Um, based on the harbor committee's review and consideration of the conditions of approval listed below, significant impacts of nearby ones are not anticipated. Run up to those actions, which is why that's forward in the C R and also to review. Um, the app to addition of, we need to set up requirements, such as standards for issuing, issuing the permit as outlined in two eighty five, and that's nine, and the little two. This one, there was very, whatever response by the app, the evaluation, um, very clearly identified, which is, is, and then. Very succinct, which much appreciated. Again, secret determination, that is, is a type one action, the harbor committee to see.
The image, the image of the little shoreline shall be gathered in the as well as that is not obviously right to be dispossessed. It's going to be responsible for, you know, storm coming through and pushing rocks around into the navigable waterways. Um. The work, the work being able to, but I didn't, that I'm looking to be, um. Considered a liquid project on stage offside, off, sorry, onside, and off the road away. Uh, the only exception that the year cover from our, which has happened to be having this. The acceptance rule also allows continuing the restoration of our community in future and allows the reception of the site with purpose ensuring that all additions are being during on net. Prior to this, the work, yeah, but I provide a hobby, the current contractor, so that there's insurance, um, products completed as designed, approved. Know how the interior will be relaxed, removable, free, and then some, so that it will, that will be done by hand. Any calls? All the recommended license one for Michelle, the executive manager of the boy with any matters in the back, so maybe we probably will be more elements in your service water area, areas proximally to the property. Seventeen is village, village department and village department, so we shall note that on minutes of any completion, I will review activities. The final survey prepared by New York City License Survey on the building department, the car community, come on, use the. We've activities. This survey shall demonstrate the location and dimensions of Rockville as well as the treated, so about the area, the element, thinking areas, to ensure that what they designed was structured before it was designed. If they need to make money, pieces of that, that's what I. Uh, finally, the villages and brown, the salt challenge, hack, uh, say, on, please, for projects and buyers, the issues, the issue because of any significant.
That you.
That's me.
That's you, alright, the village.
One of ours.
Okay.
So those are, that's the target, the conditions outline, and the actually give us more for voices. Those are the times.
No, any comments or?
No, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, um. Permit as outlined.
Maybe Jared can actually just, uh. Precisely describe the motion that we're voting on.
Just go on to make a motion to, uh. Uh.
Approve.
Okay.
The.
For one ninety two. For one ninety two Redwood.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would like to make a motion that we approve this permit as outlined by Brent Ryan for one ninety two Redwood.
I, uh, would like to make the second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, Kate.
There's, there's the secret.
He's a good painter.
Oh, Kate.
Kate?
Kate.
Oh, Kate.
Uh, John, you're happy?
I could see him being a pin.
Yeah.
He's kind of disheveled. Good way. No, this is a door, isn't it? Really?
Yeah, when I said you're a nice guy. This is the rockiest meeting I've ever, can remember.
Sweet.
Maybe it's because I didn't get my packet. I don't think I've ever done that before. Alright, or where are we? Who's on first?
Well, if you film at the.
Main Street.
Don't, I forgot to film the date.
I'll do that, though. I just, I just need to say first.
Don't you get three on Main Street?
You have that one, and this one is with the two. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Alright. The, uh, next item on the agenda for this afternoon, or this evening, I should say, uh, discussion item for three eleven Main Street. And this is a review of the monitoring report, the annual, annual monitoring report for a wetland buffer restoration that, uh, Brandt, I think, has. Many. Perhaps it's just a simple. Summary of how these guys are doing with that restoration plan.
Yeah, so they gave you their comments, they gave us a response. Um. That they will figure out the management, they did see this in the end removal.
What were your comments?
Basically that, that they renewed the rest of the.
Invasive?
Sufficiency of survival ability, you know, they, they recognized that, they didn't design it, they weren't part of the, they just brought in to do the monitoring. Um, and there are, a monitoring report actually acknowledged that there was, you know, a lack of things. They suggested that perhaps they tried to allow them to go in, and then you said, you try to, you manage it, you just expect, and then possibly come up with something that's. That they had three years to use, um, and it was our, this was our recommendations, and that it helps better their cause.
So who's actually responsible? Isn't it the original landscape designer?
Well, the owners are all responsible, they're.
The planning? Right.
And so they're working with, um, uh, all the ecologists to now figure out what they can do with us. That's the purpose of it.
Yeah.
Once a year, look at it, say, it's work, and if it's not eighty-five percent, then you need to.
What percent would you say we're at today?
I don't know, never low, if they definitely were not eighty-five percent, anything else that.
Well, maybe it's worth having an, uh, not waiting for another year, like doing maybe six months or something like that.
So that's.
For the next report.
On the app, they had to back, that was their first year, they had to back to you again next year. And the expectation is come back next year and say, yeah, we addressed it, and we're now getting to or at one eighty-five, so that way by year three, they're good.
Yeah.
That's why it's important for them to stay on top.
Okay.
They came back here too, and they say that there's drastically. Um, not compliant, and then they're in trouble, they have only one, one, excuse me, that's the backup.
So how do we keep track of, um, these reports coming in?
They're in the file.
Well, they're in the file, but is there on somebody's tickler that we need to look for a report like next August? How does that work? It's always been sort of a murky area yesterday.
This goes to the enforcement. We need to get that.
That was the most important part, right?
Yeah, and that's up to the board, I mean.
Yeah.
You have to work with the, um, the, the co enforcement office that they had, or somehow figure out how you want to. Because we may make that recommendations and have a follow up on it.
Yeah.
That's definitely worthy of another discussion because this comes up more than infrequently, so. Alright, uh, anything else? Can we move on? Do.
There's nothing more on that.
Okay.
You should go back.
And anybody could request to see a copy of the, uh, of your comments on it if they wanted to, right?
Everything is filed.
So might encourage anybody on the committee who would like to see it. So, alright, item six on the agenda, wetland permit applications, we have, uh, fifty-three Bay Street. Thank you guys for being here.
Hi, guys, Billy Knight.
But first, I, I need a clarification. Is this the yacht club or the yacht yard?
Yacht yard.
Okay, because you're, on your letterhead it says yacht club. Well, just want to be sure. I was confused, I thought maybe there were two applications here, and then the.
No, we're talking about the yacht yard.
Okay, because I'm looking at one thing, it says yacht club, looking at the survey, it says yacht yard, and.
Yeah, definitely the yacht yard.
Okay, that's, go ahead, I started to interrupt, I just wanted to be sure.
Uh, so the application for you is.
I'm sorry, before you continue, we need a motion to open the public hearing.
Yes.
I make a motion to open the public hearing on fifty-three Bay Street, the Sag Harbor Yacht Yard.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, this is an application to do some minor maintenance dredging. And so reconfiguration of dock, it's really essentially yacht yard. The dredge is consistent with that, where the computer filter to stand, and, uh, doing a net. Uh, reconfiguring, reconfiguration of the docks to, from, essentially thirty-three straight down to thirty-one.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Do, there's reconfiguration of the docks.
To go from what number to what number?
From, uh, thirty-three, and it's just there right now, down to thirty-four. So.
Most people want more docks, not.
Yeah, they, they want, uh, bigger boats on, uh, fewer docks.
Uh, it's, it's consistent with the, uh, LWRP, and it's, uh, in order to be very good.
Says LWRP says to go for bigger boats?
It allows access to the utility door, and this is going to do it as well.
And does this, um, go out any farther into the?
Uh, it does, a little bit, yes.
So, you know, sort of like echoes of the last application, it'd be interesting to see the old over the new.
You could see it, dock, and it docked behind there.
dotted line.
Yeah, a little paint.
But it is white. Uh. It shows it well on my black and white one, but you can, here. This is the, you can see these finger floats here, so they extend out here, so this is the part that extends, see.
All of this?
Yeah, and it goes out to the, um, OGS licensed, uh, apply area. But so.
As, as I understand it, you're only dr, you're only dredging to make sure that it, it has a minimum of four feet.
That's correct.
At minimum of water.
That's correct.
So this is just too small areas, the dredge is dredging, you're not dredging out here, you're just dredging these small areas.
And are these ballards or whatever?
Floating docks.
No, 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 these little guys, you know?
Oh, piles, yes.
So that's to attach boats to? There're going to be boats out here?
The boats are all in here.
Okay, that's the question, so there's no boats on the outside of this?
Yeah, there's no.
Really? They don't, they don't come in and drop, they don't tie up?
Well, these are for, um, most, you know, these are all slips right in here, so all the slips are interior. This dock here services this slip here, there's two slips here, two.
But Billy, somebody's got to tie up out here.
Yeah.
That's valuable, really.
It could be, but it's more of a service situation than it would be for, uh. Are you concerned about the navigable?
Well, John.
That's the channel.
How, how do you feel about approving this without looking at the channel?
Uh, the channel actually, according to the. Coast Guard, and what was approved ends over here by the breakwater.
It'd sure be nice to see that.
Yeah, I think you're talking about the channel, the harbor management chart.
Yeah.
Yeah, as to where that.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, I guess, in, in some sense, I'd love.
And it's, and it's off of this picture.
But it, it, you know, the navigation around here gets pretty tight, particularly as the boats get larger, and we don't. I, I don't feel comfortable approving this, I trust you a hundred percent, but I.
I don't.
I don't, I, I, I can't see this. I'll go with John seventy-five percent, but the, Billy, I, I can't see what, you know, this is, the adjacencies are really critical. And I don't know who possesses that most current, uh, chart, is that something that's been, it's in limbo?
Well, should be, should be on the website, but I mean, but, uh, you know, Nelson Orley certainly has it.
I think Brent's kind of looking it up right now. Are you looking up the harbor management chart?
Um, I'm going to try to.
Wait, I just had, hold on.
My, my question is, 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 I guess.
Yep.
What, it's unclear. How you're reconfiguring the docks. Okay, and, and I guess, I guess Will's question is, is whether that reconfiguration, they're coming any closer to the channel, for instance. Uh, and we can't tell that from, from here, so in other words, i- is this moved from the current, is this showing?
That is part of the seaboard.
Yeah.
Yes.
We got to see this relative to the.
I think we'd like to see the management chart with the new and the old, for the big picture, so.
I see something else, because how are you going to go, you're going to dig out, you're going to dredge.
Mm-hmm.
Four feet down here, then.
Yeah.
But over here, it's half a foot, so what is keeping that? How are you holding that dredge?
It's, it identity, that's, so maybe in ten years, this might have to be, maybe dredged again. So that's.
When's the last time that it was dredged down to?
We dredged it, um. It was seven years ago. And in most, it's all really good, there were some siltations happening on the.
Yours always, always icy in here and shallow.
So they, you know, and this is, and it's dredging. But I get you, that's true.
So we need some more mapping, for one thing.
Yeah.
Anything else, Chris?
I think we just want it in context.
Yeah.
Of how it looks within the harbor management.
There's an off area in here, there's the natural shore that's.
Close to the breakwater, this is the right, there's isolated off.
To the east, to the east, yeah.
Well, that's not closer to the breakwater going east.
No, the breakwater comes this way.
Oh, the breakwater.
Cormaria. Um. Let's, let's, uh, move along, I think what you need to do is just put this in context.
Okay, one thing that I did want to bring up that's important is that, um, you do have pretty much all the other permits, and there's a very tight dredging now. They only allow dredging to happen in this area from November to the end of December. So we're eager to do whatever you guys need, any way of information to provide it for you, so that clearly we can make that timing happen.
So you want us to get all of our wish lists together right now, so you can present it in October, and then go forward?
Let me put this way, now, I mean, I don't, I, I don't have any problem with the dredging, I don't, I, I have another question to ask you, versus what are you going to do with which is dredge, you want to make it as disposed of properly as, um, someplace, it's going to be a problem.
I came and.
Other than that, it's not the dredging, it's, it's the reconfiguration of the docks, especially if it's coming closer to the, you know, to the channel, I just don't want to blanketly approve this without knowing what's, what that's going to be.
Breakwater and the safety of this.
I would say dredge more.
I get, uh, some limitations to the dredging, for, so we can show you on a bigger map, the, uh, the proximity of the. Channel.
Yeah.
And who is reflected in the area.
Perfect.
That's. I, I agree with John, I think that the dredging is not going to be a problem, and if you put the spoils in the right place, all of that's.
Yeah, they'll all be licensed, uh. That's all.
Yes.
Okay, uh, do I?
Well, we had one unhappy experience with that, where there was the dredging along Amorph and it ended up on Haven's Beach, and it was like a crisis for like ten years.
Okay, good, somebody else's problem.
Okay, so you, you write your homework.
Yeah, alright, and if there's anything else that.
Shall we, uh, have a vote to adjourn to the next meeting?
I make a motion, we adjourn this, um, application until, until, oh.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Hold on a second, um. Tiffany. Okay. Council has something that she would like to present. Um, I would just like to say that if you have all the terms, or if they have, when they're discussing, we, we, this, they were trying to get this all completed, and I think, so, everything in, we have to rather, everything in order, I'm not saying that we have to act, and I, but it is ready to act. Um, I would just, I think you should present, because you want, wants to say, and then I'll read it all.
Yeah, I just say, um, I don't represent that way, yacht yard is a number here since this point, um, now, just obviously, I'll invite you. Um, back in two thousand and eighteen, we came to the board for reconfiguration of the docks, so it is an OGS, so that just letter led us to know that the dock is not be approved or reconfigur, configuration of the docks. We were there for, um, dredging, the approval of that, we were here not, not already, never getting up, getting ourselves, which is not which, but we're not be required, but we're doing it, and it's within areas, just in here, so there is a letter from OGS in two thousand and eighteen. Which I can confirm is that anything within the licensed area by OGS, it is not subject to approval. I'll submit that letter, that letter has been submitted previously, part of the file, I'll say, when we got here, and we should submit it, yeah, to make sure it's part of this file.
I, I would just say, there's nothing that I'm seeing in perfectly application that shows this within that area, however.
Reconfiguration?
Yes.
Is within the OGS licensed area?
Oh, well, you're saying, you're saying that, doesn't, it, it, we're not seeing that on a, you know, on a, on a chart, or survey, is, is what I'm saying.
What are you looking for, the OGS licensed area on a survey?
We can provide that, well, what if it, it's all within, I, I.
Right, but just understand the OGS licensed area is not provided even to the owners of the, the letses, as a kind of meets and downs description, so we've always found it very difficult to plan the plot of surveys. That's why it's to plot on the market management charts, and a lot of all of those charts as well, because those are not tied by meets and downs. They legitimately just, you can see in a little square, go on, I say, here's your license area.
Two questions, uh, when would this happen?
It would happen this fall.
Yeah, October, if we sign off.
The docks.
The, the dredging would happen in, the docks, the docks would happen this winter slash early spring.
Early spring.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the, the docks don't seem to be critical as a dredging in terms of the timeline.
The docks need at least four months to construct.
And they need real time as well, we're ordering.
We can't, we can't approve something that is not as close to meets and downs as possible, this, this is a, this is a document that's floating on eight and a half by eleven.
There are no meets and downs descriptions.
No, I, I understand that.
Serious.
I understand that, Tiffany, I've seen that before, and I've heard that before, but this document does not give us adjacencies, we can't rule. I have no idea what the navigation, um, adjacent.
I think we're all in agreement that you're going to come back in October with all these different, you're going to put it in context, right, on the harbor management charts.
Is there a way that you can conceptually show where the licensed area is?
We can.
Yes.
Yeah.
On the licensed survey.
And we will want to know.
I mean, I mean, just, just, just in terms of. Just as we've talked about with other applicants, if they're showing the existing, and they're showing the proposed, I mean, if we could see how this relates to what's existing there, you know, then we would, I think, be comfortable, uh, you know. Possibly with, you know, with approving it, but without, I mean, I mean, you've got a hundred eighty, hundred eighty foot long, you know, dock at the end, what's the likelihood of that?
Well, that's what we've said, John, you want to see.
What I just presented, and, and I, I'll make sure that everyone gets it happy, but, uh, basically, that, that's.
I'm not sure.
Yes. Uh. Reers that within the licensed area is not subject to local first.
I sent it, but I'm just asking you, you're proposing a hundred eighty foot end dock, and I'm just asking you how long it is now?
It's about a hundred sixty feet. Right.
Is, are you lengthening it to, to the east or to the west?
To the east, I'm sorry, to the west.
To the west.
That's closer to the navigation, if, God forbid, there's an accident. Then there's going to be a lot of litigation going on about who's culpable, et cetera, and we can't, I don't feel comfortable. Um, allowing this to proceed until I can put my eyes on some adjacencies, I don't think that's asking a lot.
I don't think they're asking this to, are they?
No, I'm just, well, I, I can't see it right here, and I can't.
Uh, can we add, the yacht will ponder this?
So we're waiting and talk to them, or?
I'll certainly take a look at the letter that council just provided, I, I mean, just saw it that first time. I don't have a. The.
I know, that's something that's curious to, the letters that the property file for the Sag Harbor management, so when an application comes in, and I would consider something, and not, not that's. We'll look through the files, see the, whether there are capacity limitations within the area, obviously, exactly. Um.
Yeah, well, well, what they did tomorrow, irrespective of this area, this is the dead end of the harbor.
The channel ends at the Sag Harbor management, and it's just a little, um, these.
So you're.
I think, other day, I, I watched a very large yacht back up last ones at, uh, traffic right there, so it's congested there, at, at, at time, but if you get any wind, et cetera.
The adjacencies become very critical, so.
So generally, I don't think the boats are out of the harbor until, what is it, October thirty-first, at least in the mornings, I don't know what the yacht, yacht's rules are. But it doesn't seem that you're going to be doing this kind of work until the boats are off of the slips, not.
The boats will be coming off the slip in advance of any dredging, and they're already notified that they have to do.
Yeah. Right. Right, so we're not the constraining factor here, I don't think.
Uh, well, in order to get everything geared up, there's quite a bit of work to do with dredging, and obviously, or the docks.
Dredging looks good.
You know, there's, there are, we need time, just, we need that. So if we get, in a perfect world, we'd like to. Can we give you some kind of conditional approval for the next, uh, meeting, that, uh, will hopefully accommodate concerns on this and, uh, get you going on it?
But the dredging seems to be the quickest item that you need approval on.
Yeah, and the docks, obviously, they're tied together. Yeah. Notwithstanding Tiffany's comments on our lack of jurisdiction.
So, maybe I've missed something, I thought we were kind of in agreement that you were going to put this in context, we were going to see it on October third with the full expectation that it's going to be good to go. Yeah, so.
As long as we have all the information and we know exactly what you're looking for, I, I'm looking for turnaround rates or anything else from channels, because I'm looking at something as. I know you guys.
What else do you have in mind, Tiffany?
I did this too for a while, so I.
Brent, do you think you have enough to go on in terms of what we're looking for, in terms of, uh, the conditions attached, an approval for this?
Up now.
Probably for next month.
Yeah, next month.
And I'm asking if he has enough. Please.
This might be a little out of the ordinary, um. But can we possibly split the application and approve the dredging, if it's the word, it desires to approve, uh, approve the dredging tonight, if they have all the information, I don't, I don't know what to do. But you might want to consider that.
I think that's kind of a good idea, I don't think there's anything.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that, I mean, I don't, I don't see any people any negative. I mean, even if you dredged outside of your area, probably not negative to, to doing that, as long as it's.
dredging is always beneficial, especially.
It's sort of, uh, uh, in, in that area, and so I don't, I don't have a problem with that, I, I just, you know, if, if we're going to be, you know, given a document, we're going to approve, showing a, a change in the docks. I just want to make sure that that's consistent with what we agreed to and what we did a few years ago, I mean, I remember going over this, uh, previously, as you do.
I know that, you know, in a perfect world, we'd like approval on both, too, because the lead time on the docks is very long, uh.
Billy, we're going to be, we're just talking about giving you approval tonight for the dredging.
Fantastic.
Right, and then putting off until October, till we can see the context.
Okay, no, that works. We'll have a draft resolution at that, we'll have a resolution at that point.
Well, I think we have a resolution tonight, that events have the.
Yeah, we have basically on board the board last meeting, we made a very, uh, you have a draft in your file, um, we're prepared to, to tag on, sorry, to give you the board tag on tonight. But I would go to separate, yeah, application, can be reding in, um, the dock, we just, I have to do it by resolution tonight, and then.
Right.
Next month.
Next month.
Alright. Billy, not ideal, but are you okay? Okay.
Yes.
Good, good, good. So, Jared, can you give us, uh, tell us exactly what we'll be voting on in this person?
Sure, before we get to that, why, why did you submit an application for the dock?
Uh, there's handed the.
That's why I'm here.
That's, that's my idea, actually.
So I guess we are going to, uh. We're going to make a motion to approve the maintenance dredging for fifty-three Bay Street with the, uh. With the provision that it's not, um. Approved the fee of removal and reconfiguration of the dock. If it's even within the town of the village jurisdiction.
Yes, we have a dredging.
No, 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 I'm sorry, the, the docks.
Yeah.
You can dredge without removing the docks?
Right now, yeah.
Okay, guys, you're okay?
Yes, yeah.
Alright, do I hear a, uh, motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve dredging.
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm in, in favor of that.
Okay, all in favor? John, second.
Yeah, second.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, on the condition, I mean, again, we're, we're, th- this is going to be, you're going to come back next month or before then with the configuration of the, of the docks.
Yeah, we're not, we did not make any, we're not brand new approval of the docks, just for the dredge.
Yeah.
Right, alright, next month's a new deal.
And it's going to be subject to the condition, right, that you have in here, permit?
And it's gonna be subject to the condition, right, that you have a here permit?
Yeah, I guess we're ready to confirm it, so, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry for. Or it's, well, it is what council said, we really would end of that. I mean. We'll just do a little draft in front of it and.
Let's, yeah.
Hopefully, we'll have all the information we need to approve it next month.
Okay.
Sure will.
Again, in terms, I understand, I mean, I mean, I'm only looking for doing the dredging, you know, on the condition that you're coming back with with the with the dock configuration.
I'll be back.
Yeah, okay, I mean, if you say you're not coming back, then.
No, no, come on.
I didn't say that at all.
Okay.
I'm not seeing any jurisdiction.
All right.
I I like seeing the fact that you've got the turbidity curtain in here because the last project that we approved didn't have that.
Yeah.
And they, you kind of skirt it around and let it be a mess.
We have, like, almost miles of turbidity curtain.
Yeah.
Yeah, way too much of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So the last item on the agenda for tonight is the Nevada Beach Property Owners Association, Harding Terrace, Terminus, Nevada Beach. Have anybody here from the audience who was here to represent the applicant?
May I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
I have a motion to.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Lily is second, all in favor, aye?
Thank you, boards.
There you go.
Hey.
I know. You're like the new Dennis Downs.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Uh, this is.
So we can just state your name for the record.
Sure. Sure, I have a first of all for Nevada.
Thank you.
Beach Property Owners Association. Um, this is basically a solar control rain garden that we are proposing to build on the western and of uh terrace, uh harder terraces. I don't know if you guys. We know about.
I know that there's some on the eastern side.
Eastern side, we did last, uh, that was two years ago.
Yeah, three years ago, maybe, yeah.
Uh, I'll just do one, by the way, we do have two members of the committee with us. Um, this, this project is similar, but a little robust. That side, it's a lot of, a little more energy on the solar water. So we've had, we have a couple of trims that are built in that will distribute and reduce the energy of the solar work and a lot of vegetation on top of that. So it's a, the smart project, we are.
Um. I'm looking for the drawings.
Right here.
Great, let's share.
Do we have to use permanent activity?
Scary.
Uh, let's see if I have.
Where's the water, where's?
This is, oh, I see, the water's here. Remember, remember the sluits?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
All right, so this is the beach, the water?
Yeah.
The bay?
Yeah.
And this is the.
Ground.
Existence walkway?
Yeah, there's, we're gonna take out this concrete walkway and then replace it with an elevated um.
See-through?
See-through.
Whatever it is.
Light permeable.
Like with pilings?
Uh, it'll be elevated up with four by four posts that are green heart, no treated wood. And this is a synthetic, it's called through flow, which has sixty two percent light penetration.
Through flow, I always stumble.
Through, through flight.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a, it's a PVC product, but it, it's great because it's friendly for everything, for little chairs, the kids.
Stuff grows underneath.
And stuff grows underneath.
What's, what's the elevation of it?
It's two feet above.
Wow.
And what is the drop off here?
Well, here's eighteen.
Okay, thank you, and.
Yeah. It's a nice gentle uh slope. There's a, probably a little bit more of the detail on the cross section of the most walkway, so you can see it is elevated because we wanna keep the vegetation growing high. Vegetation's a key part of this project. So we have these two uh spillways. This is one larger and then the second one. So by the time the water gets out to here, it's got almost no energy, so.
I see, so you're trapping it down here uh west of the actual trail and.
That's actually how how it goes naturally right now.
That's right.
And we're trying.
Well, it goes, well, actually, it goes right down the.
Yeah, that's true, right, right.
And what's over here?
That's the road.
So you're not gonna do anything on the road?
No, there's already a huge drain.
There's a dry well, yeah.
It goes where?
It's, it's got a great capacity, no, it goes right into the groundwater.
It's a dry well.
Yeah, it's a dry well. Um, but because of this dip rate, it it goes here before it gets.
That's right, you get the water misses the drain, yeah.
So it drives us nuts. So what we're trying to do here is build this curb up, so we have a, it's, it's a ramp up, but this little curb will prevent that from happening now and spill through here.
I see, so this is here and you're going up and then back down.
We do wanna make this um wheelchair accessible.
So nothing's happening over here.
Okay.
So that was what, I I think early on, that was what, it was a proposal. Earl, have you seen, seen this?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I've never seen it before.
And where's the plantings?
The green uh is all plantings and then there's several phases.
This is all wild vegetation.
This is the big plantings, we have a lot of vegetation.
Wow.
Wow.
So you're gonna clear out everything there now or?
A lot of it's invasive right now.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah, anything that's invasive goes, there's healthy, you know, remaining plants, they'll stay.
Yeah.
That are native. Everything else goes, and it gets planted, based on this schedule.
And um I think you guys have done a good job of maintaining the eastern rain gardens much better than our village has. And um you have, are you gonna use the same maintenance crew taking care of this?
I I would, I would applaud the neighborhood for that because everybody pays attention to it and they really do a good job.
It's growing, I just, you just saw it yesterday, it's, it's growing quite well.
It's, it's great.
Very healthy.
And if you saw it right after that five inch drain, so when we had.
Full of water, right?
Did a great job.
No, no, I'd go around there and rains and it works well. This is real problematic. What's, when would you, you got approval, when would you think of installing this?
We'd like to do it this fall.
Yeah. How likely do you think you can plant?
We can plant up until um.
Anytime, really, the ground is.
We can plant, meet up before frost, it's really, we wanna make sure.
Well, you remember what happened over around.
Brown pond, yeah.
And that's the case that they were.
Next couple of months are usual.
Yeah. We're gonna do well before frost.
May I ask you what the approximate um price tag is on this?
Uh, it's a good question. I don't have that often in my head.
It's fine, none of our business, but I'm really curious because it's like really good work.
Yeah, it, um, I actually, I don't even know, do you guys remember?
Yeah.
What?
A, a related question, which you don't have to answer, is I seem to remember that there was an application into the East Hampton CPF Committee for funding this, and I think it was turned down, is that correct?
First one was approved in two thousand, two thousand.
Well, no, this part was turned down.
This part was turned.
We did get approval for the work that was done at the.
East Hampton.
Sir, could you come up and introduce yourself?
Sure.
Give us your address or whatever, some kind of.
My name is Al Taylor, I'm probably president of the Nevada Beach Property Owners Association and I did. On our test.
Right.
Right here, and this is what is the rain garden in this.
Right there.
Good.
Um, yeah, we, we did make um actually a submission to the cabinet, two. Um, uh, one was approved for the uh entrance and that's, that's what we've been talking about. We did make a further application for some work uh west with the, um, modified some of the, we're doing now, this part of this application. Hampton did not approve uh funding for that project, which was making a disappointment.
Yeah.
To our community and and this, these two projects are actually part of a much larger uh plan that started quite a few years ago. Because of our way our community is, all those are, it's all over the world, um, we really do need, not in addition to the rain garden that we're putting now, we do need rain guards off the street.
Yeah, stop the work, yeah.
And, you know, that's a much easier program and something that, you know, our community is not in a position to fund right now. We're hoping that with our condition, um, the fact that we actually, um, we passed our whole, we put an assessment on our whole ones.
Good for you.
Pay, pay for this project, um, you know, we hope that when we go back, we might still go back to these things. Um, and, you know, we see what we've done with these, and we see that we may put extended being, but there's a, they may off, um, you know, you will for the next application.
Are you aware of what's happened in Azurest?
I know, it is, um, there was some things, well, I don't have any details.
They had an approved project and then they pulled the approval.
No.
On rain gardens, so yeah, so you might wanna check that out.
Well, I mean, just to, just to clarify that, there, there was a decision it made at East Hampton, they'll at least put a hold on funding for other rain gardens uh based upon some as from their point of view, negative experiences. They, they had a couple of rain gardens, basically they were blown out by storms, which is, you know, looked like they lost their, lost the investment, they could throw that way. Uh, so, I mean, I'd like to see this continue, but it's gonna take a little bit more convincing of to East Hampton that it's, that it's worthwhile project. Uh, so again, I'm hoping that you apply uh, but just a warning, there's a problem there of.
But it's convincing for us at this point. It's convincing for us at this point.
Yeah.
This, this, I think we've been really careful with, Billy's group is really, I think, done a good job of helping us uh together.
Great drawings.
Yeah.
Yeah, the drawings are very good, very professional. Earl, I, and Jeff, uh, I, I'm sorry, I didn't see Jeff for a while. Hi, Jeff, I, this seems to be very different than the initial rain garden, which was at the end of the street.
Yeah.
And Herb and I were there yesterday and I explained to him, that's, I mean, this part I get, but I thought there was gonna be a big to do over here. And um, this seems to work uh hydrologically pretty, pretty well, I mean, it's.
And there's, there's two big benefits to this, number one, we're getting, we're taking out.
That one is not any material. And we're replacing with essentially what had a class.
Yeah, that would look great.
Ground soul and.
It is, it is, it really is, and it has this energy distribution for the stormer that is really doing a great job. Almost better than, you know, the dry well.
So this, uh, so you know now, I mean, they just uh filled the CMU at the head of the trail the other day. I mean, after every rain in the road, right down that, there's a substantial amount of water. Substantial, I mean, there, there are many cubic yards of sand and a big rain to go right up towards the bay. So do you think that, you, you, you're the engineer, you, you think this will take care of that flow?
We do, yeah.
And what, what's the capacity, like rain, what's the worst rain condition?
I, I think the calculations are a factor to the four inch and then there's just a whole lot of. So I know that's, that's what we're seriously, some, you know, we're able to sustain that much.
Right, contingent, no doubt.
That's all, but it just should handle the cost.
So is it possible that, um, and this is part of the crying shame about Azurest, they had put in a flow meter so they could actually measure before and after of how much water was going through that area. Is, because what we need to do is document the fact that these things work, right? So is there any place here where you could logically put a flow meter in or is just not that kind of? I haven't done to this site, I'm sorry.
But you don't know what it was before.
No, no, but before they do the work, they can measure it now, where you're gonna, you're gonna work in October, November, right?
Yeah, it's kind of academic, you know, that, you know, you'll see is, uh, you'll see how much sand, right? Uh, Earl and Jeff know because they walk that way and I do almost daily.
But you know what, even so, it would almost be worthwhile to put a flow meter in, I don't know how much money that costs, but to have that, because this is not gonna be fully operational for two or three years when those plants really take hold, correct? And it would be.
It'll function right away, um, the vegetation.
Has retention, yeah.
Yeah, the vegetation will grow in.
Right.
Uh, but it'll function right away. It might difficult to put a load in this, this distribution.
Yeah, it's not a pipe.
High, but you can actually.
I think.
Uh, I like the benches at the end, this is inspiring for the east end sometime in the future. Um, I don't think we have much more to say, except it's a good project.
What do we say, we direct, we have a vote on directing that to prepare a motion of approval for the next meeting?
The permit's already been um drafted.
Really?
That's my office, I drafted.
That's very handy.
Yes.
You wanna just.
It's a tie to action pursuant to C P S, and we'll see for reviews, that's certain. Uh, it's also exempt from the proposal consistency. Uh, we do.
Any other highlights you'd like to share with us?
Certainly, there's uh high conditions, they're all standard, that, that, you know, work with more woods plants, all construction free is uh
Removed.
Be better and move probably. Uh, a real good patrol presence is being so along the pros and cons of the service. Um, the word has to be constructed in a manner to uh avoid any hazards to that neighborhood. And, um, you know, once you propose rain guards planted, it's uh to the left side.
Okay.
Any comments from the public, I think that's what we say next.
Okay. Jeff, do you wanna say anything?
Uh.
You start.
Any further thoughts from members of the committee?
May I make a motion?
Let's maybe just check with everybody, any further comments, okay.
All right.
May I make a motion that we approve this?
I'm sorry.
You gotta close the public hearing.
We need to close the public hearing.
Sorry.
Got a motion to close the.
Thank God for doors.
John.
The public hearing's closed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now we can make a motion.
May I make a motion to approve this permit as drawn up by our council for um.
Okay, seconded by Lillard. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you, guys. Well, so without your thinking cap, is there any way that we can document in some kind of, in a scientific way, the effects of this? Because we need to start amassing some kind of documentation, because otherwise people are, ah, Bob, the rain gardens, they don't work. They do work.
I can tell you, I can tell you, Mary Ann, the best one is just visual visualization of the cubic yards of sand that are gone out there.
Right.
So you can, don't you all agree?
Yeah.
Cubic yards.
Well, we need.
I mean, you can take pictures of how much.
I don't know whether. So, all right, so what would I take to East Hampton when they're thinking about funding CPF projects and they go, rain gardens don't work? So what I want is something that you think that we could take to them and they go, oh, wow, I didn't think about this.
Before and after photos of the house.
But really nicely presented, this is what it was, this is what we've got now.
Yeah.
David Lee says the one you want.
All right, good. For further discussion, in the meantime, before we adjourn, Dr. Parker would like to speak for two minutes.
Oh, my God.
I just, in terms, in terms of giving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay.
In, in terms of giving reports on other quality, um, other water quality projects, um, we're gonna be opening this on Monday unless something unusual happens. For the construction for what we call the areas K and L for extension of the village's sewer system. We've been working on this for several years and the uh proposals went out in August and the, and the bids are, are coming back. They're supposed to be open on, on, on Monday for construction that's gonna begin this fall um, uh, for the first priority areas that we're gonna do. At the same time, we're also working on expansions in, in the other areas, but this is exciting because it means we're actually gonna get something done. We'll actually know what the cost is when we get the bids, so stay tuned for, you know, Monday or Tuesday.
It's very exciting. Bravo.
Okay, so I have, I have to have the original, um, decision if you find off in it before each.
You need it from us. Is it right there?
Yes.
I gave it to my man.
My signature?
No. Nor is mine.
Let's get to work.
So they're gonna sign one ninety two?
One ninety two.
John, what would be the cost of moving the, where would be the location if they moved the S P P?
That one is already done.
Marianne? Yeah, I know it's a big, long question, but you have a short answer, other than, other than.
Well, I, I, I suggested a while ago that they move to the airport.
We're holding off on.
It would be almost equidistant between Sag Harbor, Bridge Hampton and East Hampton.
Oh, all the way to the airport.
Well, yeah, because.
Wow, that's thinking ahead.
Oh my god. Was that for, continue.
Well, let's close the meeting and then, and then we'll.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll take a motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, thank you, guys, that was great.
Alright, hold on a minute.